Do you want to read the correspondence? Um, June 6, 2018, to the Lincoln County Commissioners from the Lincoln County Council on Aging. Enclosed is the 2018 proposed and the 2019 projected budget for Lincoln County Council on Aging. The most significant changes in the annual budget for the Council on Aging are the health insurance increased by $982 annually. There will be utility costs of approximately $1,200 in 2019, but the phone and internet charges should decrease by $837. There is $2,000 budgeted for attorney fees. The LCCA has started two new elderly programs, homemakers, services assistance, and transportation passes. Each of these programs has been budgeted at $1,000 each, although at the time it is difficult to estimate what the actual cost will be. 2017 actual expenses, $45,958. 2018 proposed, $52,834. 2019 projected, $55,634. Correspondence from John Grace via email on subject of Lincoln Park Manor. To Dawn, we will provide this information and have already begun to share with Doug and the group. I would like to attend the executive session whenever that is scheduled. Could you tell me the dates of the county commissioner meetings in May? May?
I sent back an email.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Because this, I'm sorry, this is dated June 5. And then she just replied, "I could not find your corporate address to mail this, so I decided to email the attached letter." And that was the one that we had approved last week to request the financial information. So then that means, I'm assuming, that he's now in touch with Doug Albin. Is that Albin? Who are the rest of the people, do you know, that are CC'd in this? Because Doug Albin is who we're working with, and Ryan Grace is his son, but there's Lucas Goddard, Scott Sproll, Kelly Larson, we know, Eric Hubert, Mark Manganback, we know, and Andrew Mayo. Does anyone know any of those parties?
I would assume it's financial people or something. I don't know yet.
Um, Phoenix supply bill from Lincoln County, or Lincoln Park Manor to Lincoln County, a tech cartridge. Does anyone know what that is? Tech cartridge.
I would say it's a water filter.
Screen fiberglass, screen line. Receptacle and outlet plate, a GFI outlet, a wall plate. From street plumbing, this too, this is a, it says sewer machine. It's not a machine, it's just for the use of it, I assume. $130 to do what? Laundry room drain is plugged. So we're gonna pay for that?
Or sewer pipe, so I guess we're all in.
But we didn't plug it!
It's not a gomeroth there because the sewer line runs so flat through there.
I know, but I'd just really like to know who clogs their toilet and asks their landlord to pay for it. And then $387 for installing the washing machines? What is that?
Reading, so we gotta check them out when they did that work on the wall, on the wall, that stainless steel.
That wasn't part of the bid for the whole project?
No, it's a member of the tradition. It's been here a tradition of stainless steel and stuff that went in behind the houses and places. Plumbing, but that's stainless steel.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I didn't think for that.
What about now? Or maybe we get to know.
June 4, 2018, the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners was held in the basement meeting room of the courthouse. Welcome meeting to order at 8:00 AM, other members and clerk's presence, other members listed, or other attendees listed. Aljo Wallace moved to approve the minutes of May 31st as corrected, seconded by Alexis, motion carried. Alexis moved to approve correspondence to Lincoln Park Manor, seconded by Terry, motion carried. Conservation District Manager Patricia Winters with board members listed presented the 2019 budget request, $22,000, $2,000 more than received for the budget year 2018. Winters provided information on the benefits of Conservation District and a statewide listing by county for state aid to Conservation Districts for fiscal year 2019. Answered questions. Terry Finch moved to appoint the following individuals to Preservation Board. Terry Lilak, Mary Ann Sturts, Mary Reynolds, Deb Harmenter, seconded by Aljo Wallace, motion carried. I discussed concerns with the utilization of the Mobile 311 program and the Highway Department supervisors, and moved to require them to adhere to the complaint forms that were previously approved by the commission. Died for lack of second. Moved to require Michael O'Hare to follow up on the previous motion to have him bring forth the Mobile 311 program to the commission for an explanation and demonstration. Died for lack of second. I moved to require disclosure on the part of the Highway Department for kickbacks or personal receipts from companies that Lincoln County has made purchases from. Died for lack of second. I moved to hold the June 2018, June 18, 2018 meeting to an evening time due to the presence of the auditors to allow for public attendance. Seconded by Aljo Wallace. Oh, um. Motion failed. I don't know. You have motion died, maybe it's failed. My vote, I, Finch, nay, Wallace, nay. I moved to have the commission hold evening meetings during the budgeting process to encourage public attendance. Motion died for lack of second. Chairman adjourned the meeting at 9:33 until 8:00 AM Monday, June 11, in the basement meeting room of the courthouse. I've moved to approve June 4, 2018 minutes.
Have a motion approved, minutes, die for a second.
Second.
Have a motion for a second, and we're in for a discussion.
How embarrassing.
A lot.
I mean, everything on there is just how both of you refuse to do anything productive, but that's okay. I'm still voting for it.
So we didn't vote to do anything, house it on. So. We're no further discussion, all those, if they ever say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Dove?
Who are you?
Did you come to see us this morning?
Yes, sir, I have.
Got lots of good news?
Uh, it's news, I don't know, good, but it's news. Packages of information, um, the first packet is my budget for next year.
You're gonna work for three?
Exactly. Now, that's on the second page.
Oh.
The difference between that and my '18 budget was about $1,800 roughly, and that's primarily cost of fuel went up from what I had projected for '18 usage to '19, and my usage has gone up also. Again, I'm a member of the State IM Team, incident management team that you guys have let me graciously do, and we have training, we have meetings, we have things that are not in region, but again, it's a statewide team, but again, that's where the primary cost of my increase is. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much in my way with my 2018 stuff.
What is your K-Camp insurance cost of $350 in addition to what we pay for?
That's my, my particular department, is that out of, out of the overall, the overall funding.
I don't, I just don't remember that being line item last year separately. And then you're asking for 25 cents for cost of living as an increase to your salary?
That's a max, that could possibly happen. I, I went to the high end just to cover whatever I, I-
And then another 25 cents based on an evaluation that we would conduct?
Correct. And again, I just went high end because again, I didn't know what you folks will do next year, or what you will have in place. So, that's why I went with those numbers.
And then a laptop computer for $1,430, and it says the current laptop is covered under your contract with TaaS.
TaaS. And that's through Nextech. With that, the TaaS program, as long as you keep renewing those products for every, every three years, and again, I have three different computers that I update yearly, those are always covered under warranty, there is no labor charge, no, you know, equipment charge-
So is this the price of an update, or is this-
That would be a new laptop computer.
So you can't update it?
No, no. You have to purchase a new, and then it's come-
Every three years?
Yes.
So this is the third year?
Yes, yes, it would be.
What happens to the old one?
I've still got the old one that, that previously was used. Jeremiah Zacco is a volunteer administrative assistant, for lack of better words, technician or person that's, that was employed, and I say employed, under the direction of my previous predecessor, so Rod Joe, and we've talked, we communicate, we, we talk frequently, but he had, he has access to that laptop also. And again, all that's on there is weather information.
And your contract for IT support from Nextech for those three computers is $3,000 for the year, $3,060?
Right. And again, that's inclusive of no, no expenditures, everything, anything that happens through that computer, there is no charge, so that covers all. With that TaaS program. And again, I had to have them come up and, and work on my, my weather computer after the storms back at the beginning of May, when lightning struck wherever close and internet went out, they had to come up and replace my hard drive in my weather computer, and, and there were problems with that since, and there was no charge because of that TaaS program.
And your uniform allowance of $300 for clothes and boots, is that the same as last year?
Yes, ma'am.
So, you're getting all new, whatever you got last year?
Well, again, if coats get soiled, I'm not saying that I'm going to go out and graciously spend that amount of money, but again, if these shorts get hot ripped, dirty, oil, whatever, because I'm not just an office person, I, I am not doing things actually in the event that something happens, and again, pants rip, clothes get stained, things happen.
Is your last year's uniform and boots, are they ruined?
No, they are not.
Your capital outlay for $1,430, um, do you have a carryover expected for this year in capital outlay?
It goes back into general fund, if I remember correctly, doesn't it? So.
Any of his budgets carryover, because it comes from general fund, goes back into general?
Except for, except for the EMPG one, correct?
Well, he has capital outlay line item in his budget.
That's for capital outlay, line items in budgets, it's what they purchase, it's like the computer.
Oh, that is, that is the computer amount.
Yes, ma'am. Ah, correct, correct.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
You're fine.
What else you got, baby?
The next packet of information behind my, my budget request is, um, I'm in the process, and again, scripted format here, I'm just gonna read through it. After the storms that Lincoln County had on May 1, 2nd, and 3rd, it was determined that there was a need for improvements to the sirens systems for Lincoln County. With the storms that came through on Tuesday, May 1st, power was knocked out in Barnard, Beverly, and Westfall. With life safety being an issue, the Barnard and Beverly Fire Departments were paged out and asked to go to the fire station and take some trucks and drive around the communities to make them aware that there was a tornado in the area and to take safety precautions. They were also lowering rotation spotted in the Lincoln area, and the sirens were blown as well, as having law enforcement units drive around the community to make people aware of the weather. Since that evening, I had sent out information requesting the age of sirens in each of the communities. From Hunter, I received the siren was put in in the mid-'70s. From Beverly, I received information that the siren was at least 20 years old. The paperwork that I received from Lincoln showed that there was electrical work done on a siren, however, I don't know if there was a used siren that was put up or to what capacity. Some information that was found on Sullivan Grove sirens is that one of them may be close to 10 years old. It was discovered that the sirens in Westfall and Denmark aren't even covered by insurance through the county. The city of Barnard got their siren and is, it is a used siren. There was discussion at the quarterly chiefs meeting in Barnard on Tuesday, June 5, that the repeater board would take responsibility for the upkeep, maintenance, and repair of the sirens in each community if the cities and the county would allow them to have access and to take ownership of this resource. In return, correction, in return for taking care of these items, the repeater board would ask each community for a fee of $300 a year, and again, in parentheses, fee to be determined to make sure that the sirens were being serviced and maintained. In addition to this request, I am seeking your permission to communicate with, with the communities about this also. It is the intent of this department to start the grant writing process to see if funds can be acquired to update all the sirens in the communities and the community in addition to having a siren placed in the Vesper community. A company out of Norman, Oklahoma, Storm Sirens, Inc., was contacted and information was discussed as to what each community would need, and I have presented to you the numbers of what the cost would be to have these sirens installed in Lincoln, turnkey ready for use. With these, with these grant endeavors, I would be communicating with Dane G. Hanson, Post Rock Community Foundation, the Web Fund, Tech Group Correction, techsoup.org, and FBO Foundation Center.org. There is the opportunity to communicate with some of these other grant resources, but right now, I am just trying to get the commissioners' approval to proceed with this project. The cost of the project for just the sirens is $140,550 to provide one siren, Beverly, Barnard, Denmark, Hunter, Sullivan Grove, Vesper, and Westfall, and two sirens for Lincoln. The cost includes the sirens and the decoder to be able to interact with the paging system located in the law enforcement center. There are decoders within the county currently that were put in service back in the, in the 1990s. The information that I'm presenting to you is without battery backup, as generally the battery backup system is usually only good for around five years, and then you're responsible for updating that on a five-year basis. With this project, it was also determined that the need for a generator that could maintain power at each of these locations would be needed. Northern Hardware has a 16-kilowatt generator for $3,854, or a 20-watt generator for $4,027. This range for the generators would be able to maintain the usage of the siren, and there would not be significant draw on the generator during the duration of loss or power. The low, the low-end cost would be for 10 generators, as Lincoln would only need one generator, at a total cost of $3,540. With the addition of a generator, the fire stations could, could be used as community shelter if there was an extended outage or storm damage to a community. There will be some in-kind match for this project, and I am asking for the commission to assist with this project. It is the hope of myself and the repeater board to bring some continuity, accountability, maintenance, and record-keeping to the county to ensure that all citizens, whether in a community or out in the county, are kept safe and made aware of inclement weather. And then, do you have any questions for me? And again, this was all just discussion since that storm has happened back at the beginning of May. And then the last packet of information shows what the costs are from that, that company out of Norman, and again, turnkey ready use for the one Barnard siren would be $14,950. Beverly siren, the same cost. The Denmark siren is a little smaller, it's $11,000. The Hunter siren, again, as a community, is $14,000, same as Beverly and Barnard. Two sirens for Lincoln is $39,950, and Sullivan Grove is $19,950. Westfall siren, again, is the same as Denmark's, along with the Vesper siren, which would both be $11,950.
Have you looked at used ones?
They aren't that good. They're, they're not anywhere near up to capacity, or, and again, the used ones anymore, or usually the older sirens, and there's a possibility that you're gonna run into a problem. And again, the company out of Norman insures or covers under warranty for five years, that there will not be a problem with their sirens. Any, any tech calls are all covered under warranty work. And again, the reason we chose the company out of Norman, it was the closest company that response time was roughly five hours away.
So you have a total project cost of $140,550?
For just the sirens. Just the sirens.
That says total project, cost of the project.
Bottom of the thing, you got the generator in the pair of-
The generators are in another pair of, below me.
So you didn't add them together?
No, I did not. I broke it down because it'd be two separate projects.
So, but you said, there's some in-kind match, but I'm asking for the commission to assist. What numbers are you looking at?
Again, I don't know what, what the commission has funds set available for, I don't know. And again, I was going to approach Mitchell County because Hunter sits in their, their county, but again, the primary part of that fire district is in Lincoln County, that's why Lincoln County pages them out, and it's considered a Lincoln County fire department.
Are you aware that there's some issues there with the-
Siren?
No, not just the siren, with the communication. They, I've had several reports from Hunter that there's poor communication there, when they're to be paged or could have been paged, if it's within their proximity, that there's not a lot of communication with Lincoln County. They, they, you know, the, the joke is they're forgotten, so maybe you could address some of that while you're dealing with the correspondence that you said you'd like to contact all the communities?
And again, my understanding, when I used to dispatch over the sheriff's office, Mitchell County would either send us a teletype or they'd call, and say, "We need you to page out for fire at X road and whatever in, in Mitchell County." So Lincoln County would give that information out, and then Barnard, or excuse me, Beverly, correction, Hunter would respond to the fire. And again, Mitchell County has their own fire channel, and those guys are supposed to talk on. So between switching back and forth between the Mitchell County fire channel and the Lincoln County fire channel, and, and whatever happens over in dispatch, which I have no control over because that's law enforcement, um, again, I can help assist, but just because I can assist or give direction doesn't mean it's gonna be followed.
I'm saying maybe if you're out contacting the communities, maybe you can get some input from Hunter as to what the problem actually is. There are just some issues brought to my attention, so.
And, and again, I understand that, but again, between the two fire channels, and if Mitchell County can't, can't page them out, they shouldn't even be communicating with Mitchell County. But, but it is a resource up there in their county, so they have to communicate with them, yes. But, again, between going back and forth on the radio and whatever happens over there with communication, I, I, that's above my pay grade.
I would think you would be most primarily concerned with something like that in your position.
I, I am, but again-
That's scary.
If I can't control a resource over there, what am I to do?
I don't think we have identified the exact issue, I'm just letting you know that-
I'm, I'm aware of that, Alexis. I'm aware of that. And, and I've been here for 10 years, I've dispatched for 10 years, I'm well aware of the communication problems within that Bermuda Triangle up there.
So then what can you do in your position to help with that? If you're well aware of the problems, I am not well aware of the problems, but you are.
Okay, I, I can communicate, but again, I can communicate, but I, I can give some direction, but if it's adhered to or followed out of my departmental area, my hands are tied. I'm just the emergency manager, I can make suggestions to you folks, I can do whatever, but then to get full buy-in from all the parties responsible, that's where the problem is.
Well, if you took-
Do you know what the issues are?
Not, not, again, I, I've been out there for five years now.
I mean, but the, but the guys up there are playing about-
I, I haven't talked to Fire Chief Mitch, no, and he wasn't at our chiefs meeting that we had on June 5, no.
Maybe you've got Brad to see-
I will communicate with him, yes. Yep.
You put together really good presentations when you come here to the meetings, and I would hope that if you took that much time to, to draw up some addressing comments about communication issues, that it would be taken to heart and, and more thoroughly understood.
I don't, I mean, I sure don't see a problem with looking around the single one left.
And again, there's five different grants that, that I have resource to, and that I was gonna communicate with.
Communicate with them, see what kind of match they were talking about.
Yes, yes. And then also, would I have the commissions' okay to approach the communities about repeater board taking over ownership of the sirens in each of the communities?
I don't think we have to discuss this, no. Who owns the land?
My understanding is this is the communities.
Ah.
The communities.
Such as city or fire district?
Correct. My understanding is the cities.
Cities.
Ah-huh.
Hasn't been our Westfall, Vesper, or cities.
Right, right, correct.
So it would be the fire district itself, right? Because they own the building.
I would say those cities, when they, when they abandoned, the fire, the siren was there, and nobody took ownership of it, actually.
And again, I, I don't have a record of how old the sirens are in the Denmark and Westfall area either. Again, will have that, and, and-
I mean, out of years, that they just banned it, so.
Right.
I don't have a problem working with that, because are these the numbers?
Are these generators gonna generate, uh, big enough to, for the buildings themselves, is what you're doing, the whole building?
Yes. And we have a, a technician, Justin Reed, that is, is a- And we have a technician, Justin Reed, that is a private contractor that the repeater board uses. And he advised us that, he saw the information on usage of electricity or what the pole would be, and he said that those generators would more than sufficiently cover that usage.
It appears that those would be, fire district should be responsible for the cost of those. Said the county general, the fire district should be, that would be a fire district.
Expensive.
Expensive to me, you know.
Are you talking about...
Is there actually going to benefit having a generator?
Each generator to each fire district, is that what you're talking about?
The buildings.
Is each siren attached to each building? Or are they separately...
No. Their, Sylvans are strung out three different places. Out by the high school, east of the park, about a block and a half east. And then the other one's down close to the fire station.
But they're not, there's no direct attachment there?
No.
Kind of line, running line?
No. And Barnes, Barnes is out on east of town, away from the...
Our, or Sylvan.
Always with them, I think.
Yeah. Or, I'm sorry, down by the old, the old...
Are the ones in Sylvan connected by a single wire?
That's what I'm asking. Are they all connected and then to the building?
They would have to be somehow, because there's surely only one receivers for the page.
But again, that decoder that's on each siren, if that tone's activated, then that tone activates those three sirens.
But it's not by remote? It's not like a Wi-Fi connection, right? If this is old enough technology, it should be a hard line to, from one central location. Like I said, attached to the building.
I would guess, yes. I would guess.
So then who owns the structures, is the question, I suppose?
The buildings?
No, the structure that the...
The pole?
Yeah, that the sirens on.
I would assume the city, because it's in city property.
Well, Sylvan used, they don't have a city electrical, do they?
No, they're Westar.
Yeah.
Or not Westar.
It's Western Carolina.
Yes, out of Buckingham, thank you.
Yeah. Lincoln would own their own poles.
And...
But would that require a replacement, then, of that hard line to, I mean, I'm assuming if you're...
And again...
Or are these remotely activated if you buy brand new?
The tones, the tones, the decoder tones would still be activated. It's a two-tone process that those, those sirens are activated by that tone. And all that infrastructure will remain the same, yes.
But in your multiple siren communities, somehow there would have to be a wire from the generator.
Generator to that source. Yes, yes.
And so that would technically probably belong to the fire district of that area?
I would think, I could be wrong, but I would think that the power company might do that.
And I've communicated...
Just as a community service, I mean, they're a corporation, they're required to give back to the communities to a certain extent. I would, I would be surprised if they wouldn't take care of that situation.
And I've communicated with Rolling Hills, and I've communicated with Westar. And Westar told me that there was a company down in Saline that you have to buy a pole from, 45 or 50-foot pole from, and if you buy it from that company, they'll come out and be able to charge you with the siren number, the pole, or any of that. But again, too, with this, with this third packet of information, with the information from that company, they, they come out, they set up the poles, they do all that stuff that's inclusive in that, in that cost right there. So again, there really would be a need, I mean, yes, still from the electric power source to that, that pole or that antenna station base, where that's going to be at for the decoder and the siren. But again, like out at Vesper, for example, we were talking setting it close to the jail. So, is what we were talking about, just at our chief's meeting the other day. And again, I communicated with Rolling Hills, and they said, "A pole would be no problem." And he said, "We could even discuss about the electric." So...
Yeah, I think, I wouldn't be surprised if they wouldn't help you out, considering the background. I mean, they're a public corporation, they're required, but...
Giving so much community time, right?
I, you know, I'd say people have to, you know, get some numbers and, you know, talk to them, see, see what they're saying. The only way we're going to find out is by researching, so...
So then I, I have your authorization to go ahead and communicate with the communities in the location also?
I mean, yeah, they need to be aware of the problem.
It's not like we're making a final decision on everything, but until we know what's what, we can't make a decision, so...
And for example, with the repeater board, I, myself, as the emergency manager, out of my budget, I pay $300 a year for repeater board usage, or for the repeater usage. Each fire department uses that also. And again, that's why we're looking and asking, if the cities are going to get, and I say free and clear, I use that term kind of loosely, but they're not held as accountable or responsible for the usage of that siren, or that siren for their community, we would ask them to donate some yearly in-kind match money to help us assist with the continued support of that asset.
Well, I think the question is about ownership. How do you have the repeater board own that linking material between each, you know, if the pole is owned by the city, and then the siren's owned by the repeater board, and then the cable lines are owned by the fire district because they're connected to the fire district's building, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's probably where you should start.
I don't know what Sylvan does, I don't know what Hunter knows places do, but Lincoln blows its sirens for fires. I assume that everybody else does.
I'm sorry?
They blow their sirens for a fire.
The city, you mean?
Yeah.
Sylvan prefers not to have that done. I mean, they still blow it at noon and six, I know, but Sylvan Fire Chief has requested that, that when Sylvan Fire, or if they get paged out or toned out or whatever, notify that there's a fire wherever it's at, he has requested not to have the siren blown. Because again, siren blown means looking loose, impeding traffic flow, impeding first responders getting to the station. People are out with their cell phones, not, there's anything to hide. But same thing with the tornado. When we had the tornado south of Lincoln here that tore up the cemetery and out east of town, that day when the tornado siren was blown, there was court going on upstairs. Siren starts going off, Attorney Susan Marshall comes out, "David, where's the fire?" "That's not a fire, Siren, Susan." "Oh, we probably need to go downstairs." Yes, Sylvan...
Well, at a different time.
Right. It's that flat tone as opposed to the way it left and down, yes.
I don't think people understand that. I kind of wonder if on a regular basis we should add our typical bit of that, because I get that all the time, with some field tests, and they say, "There was a tornado out, and it's like, might go to a fire or something."
Or again, can we put that on my emergency management page of the county website? Could we do that?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, I just think everybody knew, that was a single time that it was a tornado, and it's been that way forever since I was a little kid.
But people are moving back, and people are moving in, and...
Right. Or you forget, if it's been a while, or you don't, and if you don't live in town, you don't hear it. And if you're in town, you think, "What is it?" You don't. So, so if Sylvan's not utilizing the siren for fires, they only want a siren for tornadoes?
That would be my understanding. And again, if there's a new chief, chief that gets elected over there when they do their chief's meetings, or when they do their fire meetings, again, at some point, that chief gets reappointed to that position.
I just feel that if it's only going to be used in the event of a tornado, to spend all this money on an alarm system that is not being used for every type of alarm seems self-defeating. Is that the only town that's doing that? Or the only fire district?
That's correct, yes, yes. All the other communities still...
Blow a fire, so?
Yes. Or request to have that done. And there's times when that doesn't happen, but again, that's over there. And I'm not saying it happens regularly, or once a month on the third day of the odd month of the even year, but I know it does happen, yes.
So is, are the cities individually paying for the upkeep right now? Is there any or...
I don't think they're getting...
No one's been keeping track of it, is what you're saying?
I don't think they're getting it.
We're now just addressing it, and it's been years since anyone's made any decision.
Correct.
Lincoln is the only town that has basket trucks and electrical circuits, so the other towns, I suppose, I don't know what they do. Draw a ladder.
So if there was a centralized fire, let's just say north of Lincoln, for example, and it was a field fire, that you'd need more than whatever is capable of coming out of just one fire district, are you, is there going to be a siren countywide?
Activated, that, that chief, whoever's district that is, that chief makes a request, "Hey, I need mutual aid, page out Barnard." So then dispatch...
So you individually choose which district to go?
The chief can request which fire district gets paged out, yes.
Do you ever go to the closest person?
Right, right.
I think on structure fires, regardless, Lincoln always responds because they have a number.
I mean, I would say, in these tiny towns, you're not necessarily, you know, a lot of times in a bigger city, you have those volunteers who hear it and they respond because they're working in town. We don't necessarily have that here. We have a lot of rural people who are on the fire district, you know, they are the volunteers, and so they are all in communication, and they're the ones that respond. But I think the issue is, for example, if I'm in town, and there was a field on fire next to my house, I would want to know. I would have no way of knowing that if the siren didn't blow, for me to think, look up and see if there's smoke in the direction in which I live. Not that I'm only, not that I'm only concerned about where I live, but you would want to know, and that wouldn't be something, when I'm at work, you know, I'm not, I'm not a volunteer firefighter, so I would have no other way of really finding that out. That's kind of the public warning system. I mean, I'm not sure what other function it serves.
And back in the day before electronics had become so overly rated, the siren was the main means of communication, you know. But now, there's a program that all the firefighters have, that Michael Harris is in charge of, e-Dispatch. And whenever there's a tone sent out for your particular department, then you get notified on your device that, on your cell phone, that there's a fire, and whatever the dispatcher says on the radio automatically opens up that line of communication with the e-Dispatch. And, and so I don't see...
So who pays for that, the repeater board?
The fire district.
They all have a...
Each fire district pays their...
A fee?
Correct. And I think that's by usage or however many fire personnel or department has, is how that's set up.
Do you remember, I think it was last month, you guys passed out a particular bill, and that was, it was like $3,000. But it was like, from one particular fire district, or was it...
The whole group. There are some, some people are party-parted, stuff, can't have a radio, and it would...
Right. Right. Well, I'm just looking at all the fire departments' individual budgets. I would think that if the repeater board was going to own all of that, that they should determine the use of the sirens, not the individual fire districts. I mean, if they, if they own, maintain, and pay for the equipment, so that there's a, and I understand the concept there, there's a centralized source, so that it's not just each individual group doing something different, that I would think that they should then have the authority to access it and utilize it. And I understand your example about someone saying, "Oh, you know, where's the fire?" And you're saying, "No, it's a tornado," and them not knowing what to do. But without the siren at all, it's kind of pointless to even have one. Just because you don't know what to do, at least you know something is going on. I mean, it's an alert system, that the word alert just means to be cautious and aware. It doesn't mean you necessarily know the details.
Do they test it over there occasionally, or do they know if it works?
They, again, the sheriff's office has some monthly tests that are supposed to be done, whatever. I think it's, I want to say it's the fire reading.
I know, Lincoln does that.
Yeah. And I think Sylvan's is also...
We get fire sirens in Sylvan. I don't know, maybe it's just when there's an outlying fire, another department's going in, or firing, I don't know, but we get sirens.
There was one a couple weeks ago in the rain, and everyone kept thinking, "Why is it going off?" And it was really...
That was, that was when the storm was, and that was actually, and again, I'm not trying to make light or make fun of or poke fun, but there was a barn fire that caught on fire from a lightning strike south of Lincoln, down by Overmillers, and, and the wrong fire district got paged down. So that's why the siren went off.
We all wondered that, too, because it was literally pouring down, and we thought, "It must be a lightning fire. How else could you start a fire in this?"
Right.
So, okay, if you're paging out from dispatch to each individual...
Fire districts have their own tones for paging and for sirens.
But what activates that siren? What physically activates it?
A two-tone, there's two tones that you have to, you have to manually get on the system, the Z-tron system over there. It's been four years since I've been over there, but, but you have to manually light up, and I say light up, you have to activate or push. It used to be a touchscreen, till that screen got cleaned with some Windex, and then there was a fault there, so they now made it a mouse activated, where you drag the mouse and activate or push on, or identify which, which siren you want to activate and which fire department you want to tone out. Once you activate that, you push select, and then, once that tone goes off, again, two tones, or three, if it's two for the siren and one for the fire department, then once that, those tones get done communicating, then Lincoln Dispatch to Sylvan Fire, I need to respond to 80th Road and Union Drive for a grass fire, structure it, possible harm's way, 40 mile away.
So what you're saying is that that total responsibility lies on each individual dispatcher who's working their shift? And they have to decide whether they're going to tone it or not?
They have to tone it. If there's a fire called in, if it's a 911 call, you don't have the...
So then how is the chief making the decision that he doesn't want the siren going off in Sylvan for a fire?
That's discussion with the chief and his department.
But I'm saying, is that something that's being told to each individual dispatcher, or...
That's been brought to dispatch's attention before, yes. And I know there's a communication log over in dispatch.
So that may be why it happens sometimes and why it doesn't others, is what you're saying?
Very often, yes. And again, depending on, depending on the incident, or the accident, or a fire, or whatever it is, you get that 911 call, and you get structure fire, people are inside, and it's a one-person show over there, there's times when you're overwhelmed. I'll be the first to...
Page it out, four or five different things.
Agencies.
On the phone.
And you're still on the phone, you're still getting 911 calls, you've got that person that you still have on the phone. Are you sure there's nobody else inside? "Yes, I am." "Oh, okay, I've got, I've got fire responding. Do you need any other medical assistance?" You ask questions, and if you get a no, 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 then you're okay. "Okay, stay on the line, I'm going to page them out." And again, your first thing is to keep them on the line through that initial page, you know, once you get them toned out, then, I don't want to say you don't care, but you've made them aware, and you have responders responding. So, so at that point, you've done your primary job of getting those people there to that location. And then anything else that you get in that, in that, after you get them toned out, and then you have trucks going 10-8, which they're in route to that fire, then you're typing that information into the CAT system also, but then any other information you can give them. There's a propane tank to the north side of the garage, fire's getting close to that, or any other pertinent information you can give them. You can relay that to them, however long the drive time is.
So I'm just trying to cut out extra lines of communication here. Basically, if it's centralized with dispatch, then what are our options of having the ownership and the maintenance come from that centralized point, as opposed to what looks to be an outlying party of the repeater board?
The, the system, the radio system that activates the sirens is owned by the repeater board.
The system in the dispatch is owned by the repeater board?
The actual radio is.
The radio and the antennas and the repeater.
The repeater and the...
The equipment, the equipment, not, not, not the Z-tron unit itself. That was, that was purchased 12 years ago, maybe, and that was purchased through the sheriff's office. I know that. I think there was a grant that assisted with that also, possibly. And, and I mean, speaking, again, above my pay grade as a dispatcher back then, but... but, but I, I know they, they had budgeted for that back in the day.
What is the revenue generated by the repeater board? I mean, how was it generated?
They, they bill out each year the $300 or the $100 or whatever it is, they have determined that they give us...
To each fire district?
To the fire district, the hospitals, the cities, um...
Okay. Like a membership fee or whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, and then it basically pays for their utilities. And then like the last time the repeater system was updated, had to look for a fund to carry.
I mean, that's what I'm just looking at, you're, we're talking about a fund that's very minimal.
Correct.
And, and to have that consume or assume the responsibility.
I think that's why they're going to have a...
What about, how, how is, how is the revenue generated for the rescue squad fund?
They have a half a mil levy. So it gets, uh, they get a half a mil based on the gym certification value and then we transfer a bunch of that to each of them.
So that year-to-date revenue is just the mil levy?
Yeah.
That's not the right amount though? Half a mil is, is $28,000. That can't be right. Well?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
It's like, so, and then my understanding is they're trying to save a truck or replace a truck, so...
For where?
For the rescue squad.
I mean, is it kept here in Lincoln?
Yes.
Was that a publicly instituted mil? Can any of these functions be consolidated?
You say fire districts?
Well, I'm saying if the rescue squad has its own half mil that was voted on, I mean, we had a carryover of $51,000 last year in that particular fund and you're saying what they're doing is keep...
They're wanting to save to replace a truck.
Right, to purchase a truck.
Because, because the last time they came in and asked for the county to give them money or allow them to do lease purchase, they kind of declined to do so. And so, um, and they were applying for bank funds at the time and they were giving the management and all to do that. So what they're hoping is that they'll have enough money saved up so that when they do need a new truck, because they probably use one, um, when they do need a new truck, they apply for CBT three months of help and they want to do that.
And is this repeater board $31,000, or $3100, is that just the line item that we designated a dollar amount to?
No, it's fees collected from different parts.
So it has no, it has no county general line item at all?
You have to have, you have to have someone in charge of the repeater, you know, have to take care of the maintenance on it. And that's why the repeater board is formed, basically, it's the chiefs, basically from all the different fire departments throwing in repeater boards.
Or, or appoint somebody.
Yeah.
From, from each district and EMS or, or...
That represents from each entity that sits on the repeater board.
Correct.
That system was replaced 10, 12 years ago, probably.
Um, when we did the hospital renovation project and I don't know, I thought it was 2009, I think it's actually 2010.
That was about 90, 80,000. Okay.
I can go to that.
Yes. They've raised the height of the tower and replaced the buggers and I can't remember all they did, give it a major upgrade.
But there's no fee for the rescue squad? The rescue squad not charging a fee for any services to be provided through this county?
We used to.
It's illegal? Why is that? State statute or?
I believe it is. But we used to build, or rather, like if they responded to an accident, we would build a road and then, yeah.
What is the differentiation there between just general response by EMS versus the rescue squad? Anybody know?
Maybe rephrase the question. Why?
If some, if there's, if there's a response to any kind of emergency, what's the difference between whether they're responding or not? If EMS is en route or, I mean, is that...
If rescue, if rescue squad's paged out, normally EMS rules because, again, if, if rescue squad is paged out, there's normally, there's normally lit systems or...
EMS.
Yeah, or, I'm sorry. But, but again, if, if rescue's paged out, if it's a structured fire, firefighters may be going into that structure. And if they are, then they want to have EMS on scene right to...
How many people are on the rescue squad?
It's all volunteer.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying, questioning the organization of it. If there's designated a half a mil every year that's going into this and someone's saying that it's being saved to purchase a piece of equipment, but it's not a county, this is not a county run...
They're using it too, to maintain their current equipment and pay for their expenses and pay their guys.
Well, I'm saying...
And it's all construction equipment, which is very expensive.
Yeah. And I think they've got a grant to pay for something that they, um, they utilize their money. It's, it's very convertible, they have it in the...
Well, they have...
And the system fills the air facts, fills the fire departments. That's why they respond to a lot of the structured fires because they have a cascade system in the one truck, the big tanks that they can refill at all times that the guy uses to fire.
Okay, and that's where I'm going with that. I mean, if there, if this is all interconnected, but we have all these separate funds, I mean, what, there, what are the duplicate expenses here? Because basically, we're, we're having each fire district and other entities pay a fee to belong to, to get access to the repeater board services, but then we're also taxing everyone for the fund that exists for the rescue squad, which is not necessarily being paged out every time that there's an emergency. I mean, your primary source of contact would be EMS and we're taxing for that. So I'm getting at, what is the interconnecting thing here? I mean, it looks to me like the rescue squad operates completely separately from the We don't appoint that board, do we?
They don't have a board on rescue squad.
Right.
You appointed the director.
Who's the director?
Trump, he's here on his side. And we upgraded the repeater system in 2008 to be paid $69,125. The feature of repeater system is for them utilizing the repeater system, it's mine for some people. And that helps pay for the expenses in the towers, there's a utility built that's charged to each of the towers. The one tower has a trailer and air conditioning, um, to maintain the equipment so it doesn't get burned out. I shouldn't say a trailer, it's, um, I think they have a box that they can select.
No, I understand the, the fee, but you're getting a rollover on both of those accounts that could be used in conjunction for things like what we're talking about here with the alarm system, sirens system. A portion of it designated to that anyhow is what I'm getting at.
It also requires maintenance multiple times a year, all the different buggers and repeater.
Do you guys have any other questions for me?
I don't think so.
Okay. So I have your authorization to proceed with talking with the communities?
We're not, so we do.
Great. That will keep your across your work, is that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Highway department, yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm not sure how good it is. I went up Main Street about 7:30 and the bank block said 90 degrees.
Yeah.
Signing update for you. They finished up this last Friday. They used all their working days. They got a cleanup day in which they anticipate being completed today. They contacted KDOT Friday for final inspection and put together a punch list, so hopefully early this week they can get that finalized, so we can get out and get some of those signs adjusted prior to harvest here. I think harvest's going to come quicker and we can get all of them done, but...
You have to get them ready.
I think they've come out about every week, off and on, but as far as the file...
Somebody asked me over at partner, what was going on? Thought that's probably what they do.
Yeah, they try to get out at least once a week and follow along with the project, We will push ahead with getting that adjusted as soon as they allow us to. Have a utility permit through Houseley Communications to, uh, rebury some phone line beyond Kyle Drive out here by the quarry. It's about 200 feet section that they're going to bury. If you guys approve that.
Tranching it in all the side of the road or?
Yeah, in the back slope.
The next little one there. Kind of like, that's what I'm thinking, probably having trouble over there hauling across it some action, probably going to try to redo it under there, haul it over across the road there. Drop it down some.
Because it's done or they're just going to dig through whatever's there?
I'm going to have to approve. That motion approved killer agreement, I'll second. I'll second. Is there any further discussion? All those persons got?
That's all I have for you this week.
Yes, yes. Getting some normal maintenance, working on preparing coves and some bridges, got some stringers under some of the broken ones, some of the bridges are bad. Getting some gravel on the spot, gravel around there. Right now, they're grabbing on the tracks of mine over there, one there on Sage here just south of Long Sutton there. Getting that, there's a lot of black spots in there, but we're doing that. It's about some on the missile base around there, see there, over by, go over to different places, putting the spot in there.
Were we pulling it? Pulling the gravel from?
From Rose Brooks.
Rose Brooks.
Yeah, they're getting power, we have power pretty well down, yeah, so...
Assuming we're going to pull them off during harvest?
Yeah. We'll get them off there and it was all, they're sealing all, getting ours and start probably everything, sealing after harvest. Kind of stay out of their way that way.
We have the equipment running or...
Michael, about more than a month ago, Mr. Wallace had asked you to bring in the mobile 311 program to give us a demonstration. Do you have that with you?
I did not, not for that.
Do you have the ability to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a reason you didn't do it when you were asked?
Uh, visited with Dawn and we was going to get on the agenda to discuss it separate, I thought, but...
Okay. I would appreciate it if you followed up on that request made by him, because I agree with that. And speaking of that program, we had had a discussion here about all these repeat requests and so I, I identified them for you. When we were talking, I, you know, wasn't able to really draw them out here, but you can see I have highlighted all those yellows are duplicates. All the check marks there are duplicate requests with the check marks here. So you were asking me which ones were duplicated? All of those.
For some reason, there's supposed to be a name in that green line of who the job is assigned to. For some reason, it's not there on this sheet. So where you're seeing a repeat, it's a job that's being assigned to more than one person.
So you're assigning mowing to more than one person? I have a mowing request at North 10th Road by Dave Winkler and you're saying that you're going to assign a mowing job to more than one person?
I wouldn't believe I would.
Well, that's a duplicate request.
Well, you might give it to the other guy that works in the district because sometimes they want to go and mow. Sometimes the ones on the way, the ones on the road.
Well, this column specifically says who makes the request and it's the same requester. How responsive have you guys been to these requests?
What do you mean, how responsive? I mean, when they come in, I'll print it out and Bob will take it, go through it and put it in where he sees fit that we got time to get some of this done.
So, for example, pile needs burned and I, and there's no date on here to even know when that was, if it was before the rain, after the rain, et cetera. But who organizes that? Who, who actually does the burn? Who's doing that kind of stuff?
Who's doing what? Burning?
One of your, one of your maintenance operators, maintainers, excuse me, requested that a pile needs, several piles need burned on these different addresses. So who does that? Who's, who's organizing that?
Well, I get, I get the information. Some of them are shut off because of the dry conditions we have, we let them burn some of that because you got a big pile and that stuff can burn for a month and get a wind and it...
Well, we were in a burn ban for a while, but I'm saying, are, are they to burn those themselves?
Yeah.
Even now, even now, they should be.
Typically, we never do any burning unless we have decent snow on the ground, just for liability reasons.
But the question isn't about the specifics of when they're burning. The question is when they put in the request. For example, cleaning a ditch. If it's not for culvert repair, if it's not for doing anything other than that particular ditch, I mean, I'm reading some of the addresses here. So basically, this particular operator requested to clean the ditch along North 10th. How does that work?
Depends on what else is going on. We've got a bunch of other maintaining. I'm not going to clean out a ditch and do that unless it's some kind of emergency. When work goes, kind of deals them, because some of them, if they're cleaned out, will have to be regravelled. So we have to work all this together, can't just go out there and dig out a ditch whenever somebody says, "I need a ditch cleaned out."
So have any of these been done? Because I see the same operator has requests for Milo, Pike, 30th, Mitchell County Road, 40th, Wheat, Union, 10th, Rye, Union again, 20th.
I can put in a hundred more if you want me to. A bunch of your ditches haven't been cleaned forever, so...
So you're saying that not Michael, but you are personally approving whether or not they can clean any of these ditches?
Yeah, they usually come in and ask me if they need a one call on it, and that's how you get that put in for them to do. Well, some of them, we was ready to do, and then it rained and stuff, and then you had waters down, they couldn't do it, so...
Michael, as Director of the entire department, do you believe that it's feasible to have one person checking every last request for cleaning ditches and making every last one call for the whole entire county road system of over 1,000 miles?
I've said for years that it's not easy to try doing that way, but it's...
So what are we going to do about that system? Because it's obviously not working.
It's not my question to answer.
You're the head of the whole department.
I suggested using district guys like it used to be years ago. I've talked about adding employees, but what it's always came down to is affordability, and I have not been able to get that.
I'm still wondering if a maintainer's primary job is to maintain his 100 miles of road, which we all know you're not grading every day of your shift. If they're not able to burn without one of you, if they're not able to clean a ditch without one of you, if they're not able to do anything else other than run their machine without you, what are they doing for those other days that they're not grading?
Riding and mowing. I got spraying some trees, fixing signs. They don't sit on a goddamn grader every day.
That's what I just said.
They have other duties to do. They fix and repair signs that are down, broken over, people run over, shot up or whatever. Spraying little trees, trying to keep them, go out and cut them later, stuff like that.
So are you saying, Michael, that none of the people that you have are worth looking at and assigning a territory to and making a district out of several routes? You're saying you have not employed one person that's capable of doing that? You need to add people to find someone? I'm asking him. You're answering for him again.
Yeah, I am, because it was...
No, I directed the question to him.
I don't care who you directed it to.
You're constantly speaking for him.
They used to have districts.
I understand that, but why are you speaking for him?
Because now they don't.
Why do you have to speak for someone else, Terry?
Because they cut back on the manpower, because I know the background of it.
I'm asking him because he's the one that gets paid to do it.
I don't care who you're asking.
It's not your job, it's his job. You get paid to oversee this department, so where are we going with all of this?
He just told you. He asked for those people and we didn't get...
I said, you don't have one person out there that's already on a route, that's capable of overseeing a district.
And who's going to do the blade?
He just said they're not on the blade every day. That was just the comment. So I'm asking you again.
You're taking that all wrong. I said they're not on a blade every day because they're out fixing signs, they're spraying trees, they're mowing. They got other duties to do besides set their ass on a blade.
Who brings the signs to them?
They come get them.
Who do they have to get permission from?
They come up here to the shop and pick out signs and tell us what signs they got.
From you?
Well, they need to. We got an inventory of them. They have to come in and report to me or leave somebody to keep track of our sign inventory. They can't just grab a handful of signs and go put them up.
Okay, so again, it all depends on the weather and what's going on. So, Michael, my question is, you don't have anyone already employed that's capable of taking over a district and doing his job in addition to organizing some of the events and things that need done within that particular region?
Did you just say, "I don't think they're capable"?
You said that you don't have anyone doing this, and that's what you'd like to see.
But we haven't ever implemented something like that.
So how do we do that?
We've tried it in the past with truck driver, where they were the lead, and that didn't pan out. You know, at the end of the day, if that's what you guys would like to see done, I guess we could interview the people on the blade routes and see if they're willing to take on more responsibility.
There used to be two Bob's.
I still don't see how it's feasible...
Well, there used to be two people underneath Bob.
Well, yeah.
But I still don't see how it's feasible for any one central location, be it one person or four people, to approve every last ditch cleaning, every last sign, and every...
You can agree with it.
Yeah, it's not possible. Bob, it's not happening. That's what I'm telling you.
The hell it ain't.
Because when you clean out that ditch, you may need a culvert, you may need gravel haul. You can't have each blade man calling wanting to gravel over here and that one wanting to gravel over there, and you've got 10 of them and everybody's wanting gravel from them.
We just talked about the concept of districts, and what I'm saying is, who do you have? Who can you, like you said, do an interview process with that would see, that we could see if that's something that they would like to take on? I mean, when you're talking about increasing responsibility, giving someone mobility within their current system, that is much more valuable than just adding new employees who you have to train. I mean, we're talking about people who've already done their job on their route for years, and I don't see that we've...
I disagree with that.
I would say that we wouldn't have all those requests that they've been doing their job over all these years.
Ninety percent of them.
Then why does this...
They drove by for 10 years and never cut a goddamn tree or cleaned a pipe out or something that they could have.
Who did?
Yes. That's the reason they're all there, and they're trying to suck up now because they got a deal of, "Oh, we can do this and get away with it."
So you're upset with all these employees for turning in the issues that they think need addressed?
Well, that's some of them, yes, but they've been there for 10 years, and they've drove by them and hadn't done anything.
So then why have you kept them as employees? You've been here the whole time. Why are they, if you think that this is...
Now they're doing it just because you got this system, and they think that it's a big deal. I can write down all this stuff on there, and I'll get it all done tomorrow. They're not going to, because that's been there for 10 years, and they've gone by it. Oh, I'll do that some other time. I'll get somebody, I'll get the bridge crew to do that. I'll get somebody else to do that. So you can't just put it off right now. It's happened over a period. I can show you. I don't even pay any attention hardly to that anymore because they got so many places. It's been there. I think guys have to cut trees that they wouldn't have been that big if they'd have cut them when they're supposed to, but they grew up to that big and going right out from under a bridge.
Is everyone aware of this? Because this is the first that I've heard of this. All I ever hear is when I question is how wonderful everyone's doing. Now you're telling me that they're all not doing what you tell them to do?
Not necessarily they've been told to do it. They should have a sense of responsibility to take it upon themselves to do it themselves.
He just said he's told them to cut a tree when it's this big and not this big.
No, he said if he sent them up to cut trees that were this big, that if they would have cut them themselves when they were that big, they wouldn't have had the profit. That's what he said.
But I'm told that these people, all of these operators, need permission to do any last job other than blade their roads. That's what I'm constantly told in here, about how they have to, yes?
Some of it, yeah, they got to call in because we have to get one call for them. They can't just go out there and go to digging and do whatever they please when they please, but they have to get one call cleared before we dig.
You think they call in and ask permission to straighten a sign? Do you think they call in and cut down a little tree that's big?
I'm wondering. He's saying it's not happening, Terry.
You're wondering everything.
He's saying it's not happening. We've heard two different stories from the management of this department, and you're defending both sides. So why don't we talk about how you can facilitate the actual management and make it more efficient? Let's talk about that. Let's go back to talking about districts. If you think that you're capable of interviewing people that you think have shown some sort of self-motivation, the ones that we're not talking about here that Bob is accusing of not doing it for 10 years, do you think they're capable of having some sort of supervisory role and saying, "Hey, this route of yours is really not, has not been trimmed, the trees haven't been trimmed in years, or all of these ditches need cleaned, I will take it upon myself to make the one calls for this"? I mean, how do we go about doing that? There is a way. You don't just keep sinking.
I think we're growing that district people themselves, but they didn't try to run a blade route at the same time they were a district.
There's a lot of information that needs gathered, decisions made before we even start an interview process with, again, number one question, money. Nobody's going to do anything any more responsible than what they have today without some more money. So that's number one.
We just spent half a million dollars on equipment, and, I mean, you spend more money on equipment than materials put on the road. What good is a $250,000 piece of equipment when it's not spreading anything on the actual road? You talk about money. We spent a lot of money on this department, quite a bit. And if we don't see that the management structure...
I'm not arguing with you on that.
Right.
You know, we were discussing if we're going to pay a different wage.
You got to go anywhere else, doesn't go anyplace.
Yeah, it absolutely is. We're talking about doing a district write-up, so...
And he said that he would talk to them and see if there's anybody interested in doing it. Now how much more do you need out of that?
No, actually, what he just said is he thinks there are a lot of questions that need answered and things prepared before he can start that process. So what do you need from us?
Are you willing to pay more?
Yes.
How much more?
That's a group decision.
You know, right off the top, that's going to be the biggest question they have.
Understandably.
You know, and then also, personally, they have to figure out what the responsibilities are.
And I think that would be something that should fall on your shoulders. So why don't you bring us...
I disagree, but I don't think I can answer that today like you're wanting.
No, but why don't you bring us back a map of the old districts so we can at least see where they once worked? Do you still have that?
The eastern west.
Eastern west highway.
14 highway separated. That was before my times, so...
That was before my time.
So there were only two, those are the people that you're referring to that would have been...
The district.
District people, one was out of Sylvan, had a truck, that worked out of Sylvan, had a truck, and a district person worked out of Barnard. They took care of the eastern part of the county, and they took care of the western hand.
Okay, so the first question then to each blade operator...
They operated tobacco and stuff, cleaning out the ditches, and they did all the special projects, and they didn't run a blade at the same time they were doing.
Do you realize how many employees we could employ for the price of one grader? Does anyone realize that?
What do you want to do when they don't have a piece of equipment to use?
We've had working equipment, it's just old. We don't even know what was wrong with the last tobacco to even attempt to fix it. We just bought a new one. So let's talk about realistic numbers. Does anyone know how many employees we could have had?
When they're 30 years old, you don't put a lot of money, because it's just going to be a constant from that moment on.
Well, Terry, it looks nice for Lincoln County to have shiny equipment, but the roads don't reflect the price that we pay for equipment. So the reality is...
So what the hell are you going to do then? Run a bunch of old junk, it breaks down in the middle of a snowstorm, and all the patriots are out there bitching because if we don't have our road open, stuff like that.
Do $60,000 for repairs to something, you got $20,000.
Yeah, probably set it down for a month or over 15. You better keep stuff up. I don't care, you can give me that smile all you want. I don't care.
Bob, I'm not even talking to you. What I'm talking to Michael about is the concept of, I think what you need to do is question your blade operators as to what do they think about that concept? Is that something that any of them are even remotely interested in? And if they are, they will have some sort of suggestion for you, which I think will tell you a lot about which one would even want to pursue that kind of concept. I think it starts with them and what their input is.
I think he said that he would question them and see if anybody was interested in doing it.
Well, I think that's a perfect place to start, and that's the most we've accomplished in a long, long time.
Thank you, guys. Did you have something you want to talk about?
Well, I will bring up the nursing home. I'm wondering, Dawn, did you get the feeling as if this response from John Grace was basically him agreeing to get us the financial information, or at least get it to Doug by the 18th, because that was our request, which would be next Monday, right? Because today's the 11th.
I would say. He said he was already in contact with it, didn't he?
He said have begun to share with Doug and the group. I don't know what the group means other than these people that he's CC'd on the email.
I would say that was true.
So let's schedule the executive session, because he asks to be able to attend it whenever it is scheduled, so...
I think Doug needs to review all this stuff before we have a big executive session, so...
Right, but we're burning time, so I would say...
I think we need to check with Doug and see what he's got.
I think we need to meet with Doug ourselves.
We cannot view any of what's provided to Doug, whether it's in part or whole, without a Doug's permission.
I didn't say, I said I think we need to visit with Doug.
Right.
After he sees the stuff, I don't think we need John Grace present with him.
I don't disagree.
But I don't problem, I have no problem meeting with John Grace in the executive session with Doug either, but I think we need to meet Doug personally first. And I think that we need to give Doug enough time. If we said by the 18th, we need to give Doug at least a week, probably, to do it. He's got other things on his plate too, I'm sure.
So let's attempt to schedule an executive session for the 25th, which is the week following, if he can come on a Monday. Maybe you could ask him, Dawn, please, if he could attend?
And if he could be prepared with what he's doing.
Doug, Doug. In part or whole, whatever information he has, I think if, I agree with you, Aljo, if you want to meet with him first and get his assessment so that we know when we do meet with John Grace, kind of what our understanding is, but I would like to see whatever documentation he has in part or whole at that point. So if he's able to come at any time on the 25th, whatever his time slot is, would you please allow for executive session? Because we can't even really reveal anything in public anyhow. Whatever he's going to share with us isn't necessarily public information. So again, that would be scheduling an executive session.
Anything else?
Yes, I think we need to look at the budget. I mean, what was your intention?
I don't think we have all the budget yet.
So I think we should schedule a portion of our meeting to talk into the budget. You said they're coming on the 18th, correct, Dawn?
To do our audits.
Right.
And then normally what we do is we send them all the budget requests, and then they input it into the big budget spreadsheet. After they do the audit, then they utilize, you know, prior year, and then they do estimate this year because they see what we're at. And then they'll input everything that is requested, and they come back to you guys then towards July, the first part of August with that budget.
Right. But I'm saying we have not had any discussion about it, and you're saying they just go ahead and input the full requests of every individual budget that we had, but I think we can narrow that down before that even happens. I mean, we already have budget requests for the mill levy from the aging that exceeds the amount that's allotted, so we need to, you know, talk about some of that before that even happens. So you're saying they're doing the audit from the 18th to the 22nd? At the end of the audit, that typically when you turn in all the budget information to them?
I typically turn all the budget information during the month of July.
Okay, so we have a couple of weeks.
Based upon what, yeah, then it was set to put it based upon their schedule and your rest schedule to see if they can work it out. They tend to try to get several counties at the same time. So in years past, it's been like, with Mitchell County, they may meet with Mitchell County in the morning and us in the afternoon, or vice versa.
Since they're already traveling, yeah. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, great, well, we're adjourned until the 18th, 8 o'clock, I guess.